For a written transcript of this meeting, or if you need reasonable accommodations, including this communication in an alternative format due to disability, please contact the Clerk to the Commission's office at 404-612-8232.
They're ready? I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a scheduled public hearing on the proposed millage rate, 8.87 up to 9.87. We call a roll, Madam Clerk.
Chairman Rob Pitts.
Present.
Commissioner Bridget Thorn.
Present.
Vice Chairman Bob Ellis. Commissioner Dana Barrett.
Present.
Commissioner Mo Ivory.
Present.
Commissioner Marvin Arrington Jr. Commissioner Khadija Abdul-Raqman.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Want to sound it?
250543, adoption of the July 9, 2025 special call meeting agenda.
All right. Do we have a sign-up sheet? Okay.
Okay, we have adoption of the agenda.
All right, we move. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda? All right. Motion to adopt by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Commissioner Abdi Rockman. Let's vote, please. All right, those in favor say aye, oppose, no, ayes, have it.
Public hearing, 250544, fiscal year 2025 general fund millage rate public hearing. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have two speakers here in Assembly Hall. Please come down, Paul Bolster and Chase Steele.
Mr. Representative, come on down.
Thank you. This is much calmer than it was this morning. Thank you all for having a hard day. Mine was... What? I'm confused.
All right. Hold on. They're gonna let me preside at some point, Mr. Representative.
So...
Everybody else finished?
I was so...
All right. You have the floor.
I was a little frustrated. I didn't get a chance to talk this morning. I have sent some of my written comments into my commissioner. I think what I'm here to talk about is the commercial assessment issue and problem. What we see when you look at the hard numbers of what's going on is that the commercial property, high-end commercial property, assessed at about 50% or 55% of its actual market value. That means 50% of that tax base is off the tax rolls, not taxed by our local government. I don't think we can keep doing that, and the pressure is on for increases in millage. But you haven't taxed the value that's here in that commercial property. I think that is actually in... against what the Constitution says. My understanding of the Georgia Constitution says that all properties are supposed to be assessed equally at their market value. Well, how can you have all this commercial property that's not taxed that way? The problem, I think, is a transparency issue. It's a very big secret about how all this gets done. I don't know the answer to that. I know that the key to it is you're not using sales data. Sales data is what drives the residential property, reasonably fair. We look at all the properties selling in our neighborhood, and our taxes go up as a result of that. We don't like it, but it seems fair. But if you take the commercial side, they're not taxed based on their sales value. Now, you've heard about the big property at 725 Ponce. You've heard that over and over again. So that property is built and valued in 2016 at $188 million. Time lapses, and maybe that's construction costs of higher. It sold for $300 million. It's on the tax roll for $130. How can that possibly be? That just in itself doesn't look right. What I would hope, you would give us a chance to have a full hearing on this issue. Bring all the parties in. Let us talk about these properties and see why it is they're assessed at...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bolster. Thank you, sir. Good to see you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. My name is Chase Steele, and I'm a resident of Hapeville and Fulton County, of course. And I come today to hear... I come here today to urge the county commission to strongly reconsider raising the millage rate. People on the South Side specifically are struggling every day to pay their bills, and this is only gonna make things worse because, as we see, prices of goods and services are not going down. And I totally do understand that we have bills to pay as a county, but I think there's other ways to find funding for the bills that need to be paid. If you do ultimately decide to hike your constituents' taxes, I implore this body to do... to be more judicious in your use of taxpayer dollars. We've seen too much waste in recent years, specifically in the District Attorney's Office and other areas as well. And I urge you to reconsider this hike. Thank you very much for your service and your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Richard Veloff. I'm from Milton, Georgia. I'm a U.S. Army veteran who's lived in Milton for the last 13 years. I moved to Milton in 2012 from Fairfield County, Connecticut, to escape the tyrannical taxation and property taxation from the Democrat Party in the state of Connecticut. I moved to Milton because it was affordable, safe, and rural. The Democrats now in Fulton County Commission are now attempting to impose a tyrannical property tax increase of 12.5% on my home. The greedy Fulton County Democrats and Fulton County government gets bigger, fatter, and less efficient, and more corrupt, while homeowners get poorer and less able to afford the simple necessities of life, which has gotten a lot more expensive lately. After suffering through a 40% increase in the cost of living due to the Joe Biden and Democrat Party economical policy that raised inflation to the highest rates in 40 years, you now want to raise our property taxes another 12.5%. We are already struggling day to day to afford the basic necessities. And now with the threat of tyrannical taxation and the threat of foreclosure on your home for non-payment, you want to do this to taxpayers while they are hurting the most. What I would say is, considering the high level of waste and graft, honestly, by the Fulton County government, why should taxpayers give them any additional dollars to waste? Have crime statistics improved in Fulton County? No. Have schools' test scores improved in Fulton County? No. Are elections more secure and reliable in Fulton County?
15 seconds, sir.
I would just say this tax increase is gonna be crushing on people in North Fulton and South Fulton. Have you just heard? People are struggling to get by, and you're taking away...
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hey, folks. My name is Joe Gersky. I'm gonna be 73 years old tomorrow. I moved here from New York City 50 years ago in August. I know you. I know Commissioner Pitts. The optic of this looks horrible. I live in an 879-square-foot condominium. My city of Atlanta taxes last year increased to $280 a month. I'm a retired person. Where am I gonna find that? I drove here in a car that's 13 years old. The air conditioning doesn't work because I can't afford to get it fixed. The parking garage that I'm in charges $20. I bought a voucher from my church for $5 because I couldn't afford... Please don't do this. Thanks.
Next speaker. All right, anyone else in Assembly Hall who wants speaker who did not sign up? Come on up, sir.
Hello, good afternoon. I took the long, hot drive out here.
All right. State your name, please, sir. Your name?
Jevia Kida. Residence of Atlanta now for 35 years. Yes, so I took the drive, as I was saying, to come in here to make my voice and my face be known that I'm totally opposed to this resolution. There gotta be another way of getting funds for the city. Now, since 2010, Atlanta had have over 250,000 people moving. They have had thousands of new businesses, including thousands of apartments, including thousands of hotel rooms. Where has that revenue been gone? What have the mayor been doing? My street is still the same. No sidewalk. Yes, you put a bike lane. What is a bike lane? We have sidewalks that go to nowhere. Okay? It has been like that for years. You have taken away the projects, said you're gonna do mixed-unit homes. All this was a scam. It's been a scam from Shirley Franklin up to this mayor right here. When was the last time the CEO... the city has been audited? Can anyone tell me the last time the city was audited by an independent auditor? Is that a no? No one can tell me? So you are asking to raise the taxes on individuals?
15 seconds.
But we don't actually know exactly. All you're saying is you need more money. The money is not enough. We need more money. You are not auditing.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
My name is Asha Imani. I live in South Fulton. My property taxes are already just barely for me to manage. I have PET scans and CT scans to pay for. I have medicine to buy. What you're doing is you're pricing out Black people from being able to live in Fulton County. We won't be able to afford to rent or buy homes or stay in the homes that we have. And you know what's gonna happen? When that happens, there won't be enough Black people in the city to vote for people like you in office. We will no longer have a Black mayor. You need to think about that. If you get rid of your Black constituents, nobody will be there to vote for you because white people don't think like we do. They're clandestine. They stick together. They vote for each other. So if you get rid of all the Black people, because that's what you're gonna be doing, we won't be able to afford to live in Atlanta.
Anyone else? Come on, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Jackson. I live off of Cascade Avenue. I ended up buying a house eight years ago because I was being priced out of rent. I was in the Midwest, Midtown Midwest Buckhead area. My rent went up $250 per month the first year. I implored on the rental office, "Please don't do this. I've been a good tenant," so forth and so on. So they didn't go up but $75. The next year, they came back and wanted to go up $300 a month. So I decided I gotta get out of this rent game and buy a house because at least I know that my mortgage will be steady from year to year. I've been in my house for eight years this spring. When I moved in, my mortgage was $991. It is $1246 today. And you now want to put another 12.5% increase. As all of the individuals before me have said, the increases are killing us. You know, a car note is $600. I haven't bought a new car. I've been using... I've been given a car twice. I haven't had a car note in 10 years. And so, yeah, that's great. But it's only because I can't afford to do car note, rent. I had two kids in college. They have both graduated. My son is now talking about not leaving home because it's just so unaffordable. Atlanta has become unaffordable. I'm originally from New Jersey. I moved here from D.C., and at that time, it was very affordable. And I could see myself staying here for a very long time. I'm coming up on my 30th year this August, living in the city of Atlanta. I love the city of Atlanta. Please don't do this right now. The economy is not such that people can sustain themselves and their family, have a working car. Transportation is being cut. All of the different bus situations are being cut. This is just not a good time.
15 seconds, ma'am.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's basically it. You know, the cost of living has continuously risen since I've been here and more so over the last eight years. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else in Assembly Hall who is here to speak on the millage rate? Come on down, ma'am. Are you serious? Yes, ma'am. You have the floor.
Hello, my name is Daniella Corwick. I live in East Point. Last year, this commission approved a reduction for Georgia corporate income tax rates from, let's see, 5.39% to 5.19%. A lot of these companies already don't pay their fair share of taxes, including Amazon, including Google, including Georgia Power. So I'm not sure why you are asking the individuals to pay more when corporations are paying less. They have seen wild economic booms since COVID, largely due to, unfortunately, a global tragedy, but the price gouging that has since occurred. And many of your constituents have not been able to keep up since 2019 or 2020. I'm wondering why we aren't looking to these massive trillion-dollar corporations to come up with this funding and at least pay what you are asking of us to pay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Last call. Anyone else? All right, anyone on Zoom?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have 92.
92?
Yes.
Hello, commissioners. The first person to speak is Julian Benet.
Good evening, commissioners. You wouldn't need a millage increase if your assessors fairly valued commercial trophies. Several people have made that point. I'm gonna give you some detail on that. The under appraisal of trophies loses Atlanta about half a billion and another 300 million for the rest of Fulton. Two examples: hotels and the new QTS mega data center. Your assessors appraise hotels at 50% of market value. That's based on the public offering document that the Gulch developer put out, and it's the sales ratio on the last six major Atlanta hotel sales. Look at the biggest 12 Atlanta hotels. That under appraisal loses about $21 million a year. Across the city's 50,000-plus hotel rooms, I estimate that loss around $100 million a year. Now, turning to the QTS data center at Herndon Street. QTS called it a $1.3 billion project. The 2025 appraised value, just $96 million. So that's 1.3 versus 96 million. It's an 850,000-square-foot data center, and developers say that the construction costs are $1,000 a foot. So that's an $850 million facility without the servers, and it's appraised at $96 million. QTS paid $80 million for the land alone. Where's the rest of the facility's value being taxed? It's not. This one under appraisal loses around $13 million a year. Commissioners, at long last, please instruct your assessors to appraise trophy commercial at market value, just as they do homes. Then you could spare voters a millage increase with a huge amount left over. Thank you very much.
The next person to speak is Chris Rodenbaugh. Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Hello. My name is Chris Rodenbaugh. I live in southeast Atlanta. And I was there in person this morning and now on Zoom because I'm deeply concerned, as Julian was saying, about the fairness that the county is coming to homeowners and indirectly renters for more revenue while there are commercial trophy properties valued at only about 50% of what they sell for. A neighbor down the street from me in Boulevard Heights, where I live, owned his home for 27 years and just had to move out last month because the taxes and the bills and caring for his elderly mother were too much for him to handle. There are countless situations like this all across Atlanta. I heard many people in the audience say, talk about it this morning. I understand the county might need more revenue, and I think perhaps there is a case to be made for that. But Fulton County, particularly in this political moment, should ask large corporations to pay what is fair before we ask homeowners and indirectly renters to pay more for the Fulton County budget through a millage increase. I ask all of you commissioners to use your formal and informal authority to be sure the Fulton County Board of Assessors does everything possible to accurately appraise commercial properties before asking for a millage rate increase. My house is appraised according to comps in my neighborhood, which isn't perfect, but it's relatively close to recent sales at price per square foot. We should apply that same logic to Ponce City Market, which in 2025 was appraised at only $367 million. If using comps and other real estate data to determine price per square foot, it would be worth over $1 billion in its appraised value. That would bring in at least $11 million additional dollars in revenue for Fulton County. I don't understand why fixed-income seniors should be paying that $11 extra million in a couple of hundred dollars extra a month when we could ask Ponce City Market or other major corporate interests in the city, like Microsoft, Google, it's King &amp; Spalding, et cetera, why they get a tax break when homeowners and renters are asked to pay more? Thank you for your time. Please, please, hold them accountable.
Thank you. Commissioner Arrington.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. I point a personal privilege. I just want to make sure that the listening audience knows that residential properties are assessed at 40% of their appraised value. And so if commercial properties are being assessed at 50% or 55% of their appraised value, then that is more than the assessment for the residential properties. And so I just want to make sure that people understand that so that, you know, they're not saying things that just, you know, are not true and don't make sense, right? I'm not a billionaire either.
Just a minute, just a minute.
But the point is, the people... The point that I'm making is that people are saying, "Hey, you need to assess the commercial properties at their appraised value and instead of assessing them at 50% or 55%." But we don't assess residential properties at their appraised value. The assessed value on a residential property is at 40% of their appraised value or the market value. So, and a lot of the laws regarding that are state laws that we don't have any control over, that our assessors have to do based on the state law. So, you know, we have to make some hard decisions, right? Everybody has to make hard decisions. But please don't come down here and point the finger at us like we're bad people because we have to make...
Point of order, Mr. Chair. This is the people's time, not ours.
Point of order, point of order.
Just a minute, please.
I'm happy to let the people talk. I'm just saying, people are coming here talking about assess the commercial properties at full value, and their residential properties are assessed at 40%.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, next speaker. The next person to speak is S. Vin Kit Squaring. S. Vin Kit Squaring.
Hello?
Yes, sir. We can...
Hello, sir. Yeah. What I wanted to say is, I've been a resident of Fulton County for almost 10 years now. With great difficulty, I saved money to become a homeowner. And the costs just keep going up, and I can't understand why the property taxes should go up so much compared to the overall rate of inflation. I do understand there are a lot of expenses that the county has to bear, but at the same time, the property values are also going up. So I just request the commissioners to consider some kind of a law so that the property taxes don't go up much more around the rate of inflation. It can't go substantially above. It hurts all the working people, especially times like this year when there have been a lot of problems with people's jobs, employment, economy, and the expenses. So I really request the commissioners to consider, reconsider the raise to something around the rate of inflation, and please do that going forward every year. It is very hard for people who are earning, who are working and very hard to make all their ends meet. That's all I had to say. Thank you very much.
The next person to speak is Shante Page.
Hi, good evening. I'm requesting that my taxes not go up for a third year in a row. My taxes have doubled. I own my property since 2005, and I'm in the historic Castleberry neighborhood. Property values have decreased due to the tanking economy, but our taxes have increased substantially. I understand money is needed, but at the risk of homeowners losing their homes or not being able to afford their homes, I think they need some type of reprieve for taxes not continuing to rise rapidly in a struggling economy. That's it.
Next person to speak is Whitney Maxwell. Whitney Maxwell. Okay. Next person to speak is Duane Price. Duane Price.
Hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good evening. Is the 40% value figure that Councilman Arrington mentioned, does that include a homestead exemption? And if it does, then if a property owner, a residential property owner owns a second property, even if they're purchasing it for one of their kids, then they don't get that additional percentage off for their assessment? Additionally, what is the average revenue that a commercial property owner sees in a year versus the average revenue that a residential property owner sees in a year? Is that taken into consideration? You asked that we don't make you the bad guy, but are you considering those things when you're assessing the property values? Thank you.
The next person to speak is A. Matru. A. Matru. Okay, the next person to speak is Shalise Dowdy. Shalise Dowdy.
Okay. I was being... Sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you so much for letting me come on to speak. I just want to say this. We're struggling, and the times right now, it's not a good time for us to have an increase on our property taxes. I don't understand why... I don't understand why corporations are being, not being taxed at the level that they should. But I go back and I think about all of the plans for UN 2030 plan and what is going on with World Economic Forum. I realize that all politicians, federal, state and local, are in on that plan to make sure that we have nothing. And it's not fair. We work hard for it. And those who can hear me, I strongly urge you at this point, try to get out of here. Go somewhere where your money will go further, where you can retire and be happy because it looks like they want us to do is to eat back on fields, picking fruit and doing whatever and we won't have anything while they have everything and they laugh at us. It hurts. It literally hurts. So I'm just asking you to please consider to not raise these taxes so high because we're all struggling. Those who can, I say get out of America. Thank you.
Next person to speak is A.J. Taylor. A.J. Taylor. Okay. Next person to speak is, excuse me, Noel Sin. Noel Sin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I just am calling on Chairman Rob Pitts. Your description on your website says you are the taxpayers' watchdog. So please, please help us find efficiencies within the county's budget to not pass on this cost to the, to the property owners. That's all.
Next person to speak is Alex Lampert. Alex Lampert. Next person to speak is Audrey Lukavish. Andri Lukavish. The next person to speak is Angela E. Angela E. Next person to speak is Anna Gwynn. Anna Gwynn. Next person to speak is Chelsea Gull. Chelsea Gull.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Chelsea Gull and I'm a resident of the 30315 zip code in South Atlanta. I'm here to voice my strong opposition to the proposed millage rate increase. Despite last year's sales history in my area showing an 8% decrease, my property assessment increased by 10% this year. That simply does not align with the reality of the market or the level of investment we've seen here on the South Side. We all want a stronger, safer and better funded Atlanta, but these continued increases, particularly in historically underserved neighborhoods, feel disproportionate and unfair. Raising the millage rate on top of inflated assessments puts real strain on long-term residents. And over time, this will just outprice families, displace communities, and ultimately undermine Atlanta's appeal to both businesses and working professionals. I urge you to consider the full impact of this decision, especially in communities like mine that are still waiting to see equitable investment. Thank you so much for your time.
Next person to speak is Miguel Torres.
Yes. Good afternoon. I'm hoping that you can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Listen, I've been listening to your presentation this morning and this afternoon, and I'm still having an issue with the amount of transparency there is in the budget process. I think that we, the taxpayers, we are owed an explanation of what's really driving these increases that we are now facing. Another question that I have is how do you prioritize the budget light items? Because I'm yet to see that where I can put my hands as to why and where these priorities are being set. And finally, what would be the net effect of this increase in our tax bills? And if you could answer that, if the process itself could answer that, it would be a lot easier for us to understand where and how is it that this could be thinking about a 12-point percent increase on taxation? Thanks a lot. That's all I have.
Next person to speak is Malia Coaks. Malia Coaks. Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much and thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to say that I am a first-time homeowner in my family. I was 25 years old when I purchased my home in South Fulton. And I'm just asking that it is reconsidered in regards to the taxes. There's a lot of people that I know within my subdivision that are worried. And I'm just hoping that we are able to come to a resolution and reconsider this. I know this isn't just an Atlanta thing. It is a global thing. But I'm just asking, you know, for reconsideration. That's all. Thank you so much.
Next person to speak is Anupa Jinking. Anupa Jinking. Next person to speak is Ashley Clark. Ashley Clark. Next person to speak is Dontrell Cotlidge. Dontrell Cotlidge.
Hello?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Okay, how you doing? We just, we moved into Fulton County maybe around five years ago. And I see that we keep getting all these increases in the taxes. And I'm just hoping that you guys could put some consideration in and be a little bit more forward-thinking because we're kind of coming up to a space where maybe in the next two to three years, we could see something around 10 to 20% unemployment for most of your white collar workers from AI. And then you also have the coming of robotics. I think you got to find other places to tax with some of these automations and some of these things that are coming in and not go against the homeowners. That's about it. Thank you.
Next person to speak is Jennifer Allward. Jennifer Allward. Okay, Jennifer Allward. All right. Next person to speak is Melanie Long.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I think I might have noticed a reaction when the number was read that there were 92 people in the virtual room. And I hope that that number just indicates how much this issue means to us, the people who live in Fulton. And I'm someone who really believes that political change does happen at the local level. And I'm grateful for people like you who serve in those roles. And I just hope that you see that this really has an impact on us and reconsider and consider different options because the increase is too high for the average person. Thank you.
Next person to speak is B. Kitchens. B. Kitchens. B. Kitchens. Next person to speak is Ashley Clark. Ashley Clark. Next person to speak is Anita Latendre. Anita Latendre. Anita Latendre.
Hello. Sorry. With all the corruption that's been exposed with Fonny Willis alone, why not do an audit or a doge to the Fulton County finances before raising taxes? After all, we passed, I think it was 349B, about the 3%. And then to have the millage rate increase, I feel, is not in the spirit of the law. And if you put the finances up there without personal identifiable information, regular folks can do an audit and probably find a lot of waste.
Okay. Next person to speak is B. Kitchens. B. Kitchens. Okay. B. Kitchens. Next person to speak is Fon Ortega. Fon Ortega.
Hello, yes, sir. My name is Fon Ortega. I'm in the film industry here in Atlanta, Georgia. I spoke earlier briefly about back in 2014, 15, the Atlanta area was booming with the film industry. And there was people here buying up houses, saying, oh, it's so inexpensive to live here. Well, it's not expensive, it's not inexpensive to live here anymore. And the properties were bought up and there was a lot of people here. But now the film industry has all but gone away. Trump has tariffed 100% if we want to even travel. And not a lot of films being shot here, sir. So I do want to say that I appreciate the Democratic Party that is fighting for us here. I appreciate that we need to take care of the homeless. I do not feel that the World Cup is coming here with all this turmoil at all. And I would like to make sure that the smart elections are in effect for us, that our voting tabulators are correct. And I'd also like to try to bring more community together so we can come to some resolve with this. I am concerned also about the homeless, so I appreciate your time today and want you to consider what we were as a community when the film industry was booming and how much money there was coming in and how there, it's just not here now. So that's, that's my concern is where we are globally and the concerns for war and detention centers and just all of that is of great concern. And I think that's why we're all here, just very upset. But thank you for your time.
The next person to speak is Victoria Limberg. Victoria Limberg. Victoria Limberg. Next person to speak is Paula Weatherby. Paula Weatherby.
Thank you for letting me speak. I live in Roswell and I just would like to say I would love to see North Fulton separate from South Fulton. And that's really all I have to say at this point, absolutely against any rate increases. So thank you for your time.
Next person to speak is Ivana McHoney. Ivana McHoney.
Just on the call to say I am against the rate increase. That's it.
The next person to speak is Barbara Jacobstein. Barbara Jacobstein. Okay. Next person to speak is John Phelan. John Phelan. Okay, John Phelan. Next person to speak is Barbara Wiggins. Barbara Wiggins. The next person to speak is Barbara Jones. Barbara Jones. Next person to speak is Bridget Trotty. Bridget Trotty. Next person to speak is Carol Coleman. Carol Coleman. Next person to speak is Cheryl Nita Cone. Cheryl Nita Cone.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I would like to say we really need to be conscious of this request. As previously mentioned, there is a great concern with layoffs coming with the institution of AI. And maybe we can decrease some of the costs that the county is receiving with probably establishing some AI benefits within the county to decrease headcount and make processes more efficient. Also, we could consider putting a budget on blockchain so everyone will have an opportunity to view what expenses are being paid out and what can be decreased.
Next person to speak is Autumn Miller. Autumn Miller. All right. Next person to speak is Cassandra Wells. Cassandra Wells. Next person to speak is Scott Engelhardt. Scott Engelhardt.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much for taking my, my speak tonight. My concern is, I'm up in Alpharetta and in the last two years, three years, my assessed value, appraised value is going up 82%. I'm okay paying my taxes for the county, but my biggest concern is that what we're doing here is we're raising the mill rate and then we're going to raise the appraised value, which raises the assessed value, and we're going to get double dipped. So now my house is worth about 750 and my appraised value this year is supposed to be 891,000. That is an insane amount. So we're, I feel like, and I don't know if this is happening in South Fulton, but the concern in North Fulton is that we're going to get double dipped. We're going to get hit twice because our property value is going to be increased dramatically, but we're also going to see a potential millage increase. So I hope you, I'm not sure if you guys really are listening to all this, but I hope you are. So thank you for your time.
Next person to speak is Cindy Lou.
Hello. I just want to stress that strong homeownership creates strong communities. And as long as homeowners keep getting crunched and crunched and priced out of their communities, the communities fall apart. Thank you.
Next person to speak is Daphne Cole. Daphne Cole. Next person to speak is Deona W. Deona W. Next person to speak is Darren Foreman. Darren Foreman. Next person to speak is Drew Norby. Drew Norby. Drew Norby. Next person to speak is Jonathan Oliver. Jonathan Oliver.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I have been a resident of the South Fulton area for 20 years. This will be my 20th year in Georgia. And I've owned my home since 2009 and I have seen the taxes and cost of living skyrocket very gradually, but in the recent years, it has gotten to be almost unbearable. And I just want to say I'm totally against the millage rate increase. I'm totally against any more taxes being increased. I was hit personally this year with an increase in my property taxes and an increase in our insurance because of some particular reason. And it seems like they're trying to squeeze blood from a turnip. We just don't have it. People don't have it. Things are not increasing the way that the taxes and other fees are increasing. And it's just not right. It's the only people that are going to be able to own homes are the banks and corporations, which are there buying up all the houses in my neighborhood. And it's just not right.
Next person to speak is, excuse me. Next person to speak is Ernest Lewis. Ernest Lewis.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I live in South Fulton, in Union City. And me myself, as everyone says, I'm against the millage rate because I don't know if it's because of all the data centers. Because I live around, I have almost six Amazon warehouses around me. And they built a data center, which is about two miles away from me. I don't know if they got anything to do with this property tax, but like they say, I think they need to pay their share of taxes also. That's it.
Next person to speak is Georgianne Caruso Hornsby. Georgianne Caruso Hornsby. The next person to speak is Adrian Montgomery. Adrian Montgomery.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, thank you for taking my call. I just have a major concern of being a single female living in the Cascade area on a corner property. My tax increase almost 800% in the last three to four years. I am aging and I have a big concern about myself and my neighbors about not being able to live in our homes because of the tax increases. And I would like to see some changes. Thank you very much.
Next person to speak is Corey Webster. Corey Webster. Next person to speak is Georgia Zurka. Georgia Zurka. Next person to speak is Debbie Smart. Debbie Smart. Next person to speak is A.J. Taylor. A.J. Taylor.
Yes, I'm back. I think the first time you called me, I was driving. So thank you for the opportunity to speak. Just like some of my other fellow neighbors and homeowners, I am against this increase. And I think Commissioner Arrington comparing the individual homes to commercial properties, like comparing apples to oranges. I think there, there needs to be a higher rate for these corporations and these private commercial properties versus taking it from the homeowners. As people have already alluded to, we are looking at high unemployment rates. Just now, we have about 2,500 federal employees who have been illegally fired in Georgia based on current policies of this administration. And that's going to cause a ripple effect in this economy. And I just think that, I hope that you truly are listening to the context of what's happening, not only in the country, but also in Atlanta. I don't think people can afford this. I know for myself, and especially I think about those who are aged and who are elderly. And we are talking about the transformation of Atlanta. If we keep taxing and taxing the individual because we can't afford it. Thank you so much.
The next person to speak is J.F. J.F. All right. Next person to speak is Marcy, excuse me, Marcina Davis. Marcina Davis. Next person to speak is Demya Jackson. Demya Jackson.
Hi, my name is Demia Jackson. I'm a first time homeowner and I bought my home in 2023 with the support of Atlanta programs. We are told to buy homes and build financial security to attain steady mortgages. I've only been a homeowner two years and I've already seen an increase of $200 a month in my mortgage. So I don't see how we can build and continue a future here and encourage our community to buy and invest unless that's kind of the point. My mother is also a homeowner in South Fulton on a fixed income and I just hate to see the strain on our families. So I just ask that we do not increase the taxes for Fulton County. Thank you.
The next person to speak is, excuse me, is Cedric Musing. Cedric Musing. Okay. Next person to speak is Melanie Long.
I spoke earlier, thanks for giving me the opportunity.
Problem. Next person to speak is Jacqueline Parker. Jacqueline Parker. Next person to speak is Jonathan Mayweather. Jonathan Mayweather. Next person to speak is Kevin Jones. Kevin Jones. All right. Next person to speak is Lee Steele. Lee Steele. Next person to speak is Julie French. Julie French.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I think that what I've been thinking and wanting to say has already been voiced. And it's how in these times and economies can people afford? My taxes have gone up every year, 42% last year. And it just doesn't make sense to increase the millage rate. I've been a resident and owned my home for 30 years and will soon be on a fixed income. So I completely understand what's happening. I understand the need for money. I also understand as a small business owner, a need for transparency. And where's the money being spent? And where's it coming from? So that's basically all I wanted to say. And thank you for the time and for the opportunity to speak.
The next person to speak is Annette Shamberger. Annette Shamberger. The next person to speak is Aria Fior. Aria Fior. Next person to speak is Elektra Bree Thompson. Elektra Bree Thompson. Elektra Bree Thompson. Okay. Next person to speak is Jill Bernard. Jill Bernard. Next person to speak is, pardon me, Melissa Paul. Melissa Paul. Next person to speak is Kinda Baker. Kinda Baker. Next person to speak is Marjorie Wranglin. Marjorie Wranglin.
I too do not support the increase in the, in the taxes. Taxes, it's becoming unsustainable. Thank you.
The next person to speak is Nadine Burton. Nadine Burton. Next person to speak is Peter Shorish. Peter Shorish. Next person to speak is Renee Roberts. Renee Roberts. Next person to speak is Regina Daniel. Regina Daniel. Next person to speak is Reginald Hunter. Reginald Hunter. Next person to speak is John Philan.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I'd like to point out that as a Fulton homeowner, that there have been significant increases in assessed property values due to the real estate market. And these rising assessments automatically increase tax bills, even if the millage rate stays the same. A 12.49% increase on top of rising assessments is effectively a double hit to taxpayers. No millage hike is necessary. The county's own data shows that a rollback millage rate would maintain revenue neutrality. Choosing not to adopt the rollback rate means the county is intentionally increasing taxes beyond what's needed to maintain services. This contradicts the principle of fiscal responsibility and burdens the residents unnecessarily. Thank you.
The next person to speak is Roberta Spivey. Roberta Spivey.
Hi, most of what I want to say has already been spoken on, but I do want to say I'm opposed to this increase. And like everyone else said, it will be a double dip. And I want everyone to remember this when it's time to vote again, that we do have power as people and that we need to remember that. But I am opposed to this. Thank you.
The next person to speak is Spat, excuse me, Scott Bogart. Scott Bogart. Scott Bogart. Next person to speak is Whitney Maxwell. Whitney Maxwell.
Hi, I'm here. Sorry, I'm trying to make dinner at the same time. Hi, my name is Whitney Maxwell and I am a resident of Sandy Springs and a former resident of Atlanta. I've been a homeowner in Fulton County for over 15 years now. Sorry, I'm a little out of breath. I had to run. I understand that with inflation, expenses have increased. But Fulton County, just like the rest of us have had to do, must cut expenses. We need to have a hard look at Fulton County's expenses and make some difficult cuts. If Fulton doesn't already have the money to pay for something, then we simply can't afford it, just like the rest of us. Thank you.
The next person to speak is Rhonda Allison. Rhonda Allison.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I am a Fulton County homeowner and I have seen a big tax increase last year and I've seen a big tax, a 12% this year. I am retired. My husband is unable to work and it is becoming cost prohibitive to even be in this house and manage all the expenses that other people have been. Everything has gone up. I feel like we're getting squeezed from both ends. I do not agree with it, with a 12% increase. And I think fiscal responsibility is important at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Next person to speak is Stephanie Parker. Stephanie Parker. Next person to speak is Teresa Cotman. Teresa Cotman. Next person to speak is Tiff Jackson. Tiff Jackson. Next person to speak is Tracy Cooley. Tracy Cooley. Next person to speak is William Davis II. William Davis II. Okay, William Davis II. Next person to speak is, excuse me, Valerie Wolf. Valerie Wolf. Next person to speak is William McKinnon. William McKinnon. Next person to speak is Bea Kitchens. Bea Kitchens.
Hello, thank you for having this meeting and hosting it tonight.
Hello, thank you, uh, for having this meeting and hosting it tonight. Um, I want to say that, uh, on the twelve-point-four-nine, um, tax increase is very high. And I would add that, um, on, I don't know actually, um, if there's any budget needs or shortfalls that are driving this increase. And was wondering if you've explored other options as far as cost-saving measures or spending cuts before turning to the tax increase. Um, thank you for your consideration and your time this evening.
Next person to speak is, let me see, WSB TV, I believe it's Content Center. WSB Content Center.
That's ninety-one, one more. Any more? I have ninety-one.
Um, I actually have two more and that's it.
Well, we're close, I'm good.
The next person to speak is Yolanda, Yolanda Walker. Yolanda Walker. And the last one is Winette Hammonds. Um, wait, give me a second.
I don't know.
Uh, give me a second here. Um, the last one is William Davis II. William Davis II.
He wasn't there before.
He's speaking now. William Davis II? Okay. He went in and out. And one, one final one that just came in was Diane, Diana Britton. Diana Britton. Okay, and I do believe, wait a minute, one more and I think that'll do it. And this concludes the Zoom public comment.
Thank you, sir. That's it. Any other matters that come before us today? Alright. There we are, Jaren. Thank you for your patience, attendance.
For a written transcript of this meeting, or if you need reasonable accommodations, including this communication in an alternative format due to disability, please contact the Clerk to the Commission's office at four zero four six one two eight two three two.